Thank you, sir, very much. Good morning, everyone, and welcome. We will call to order the regular meeting of the Lawrence County Commissioners today being Tuesday, December 10 of 2024. We appreciate everybody joining us. A couple of housekeeping items. We'll note that the meeting is being livestreamed. Also note that it's being recorded. And then we would request if you have any type of an electronic communication device, if you please put it on vibrate or silent. We'd appreciate that courtesy. I believe Commissioner Sanada is participating by phone. Chris, are you hearing us okay?
Yes, I am, Chairman.
Great, and we hear you fine too as well. We've got the microphone right next to the telephone. So thanks for joining us, Chris. We appreciate it. We always begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Then we'd ask you to remain standing for a moment of silence. Sheriff Colero, would you mind leading us in the pledge?
My pleasure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands uninitiated under God, in the discipline of the Constitution, and justice for all.
Please remain standing. We'll have a brief moment of silence. Thank you, everybody. Vanessa, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Sanada?
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Here.
Commissioner Vogler?
Here. We do now form. I'll note that, by the way, did everybody get a copy of the agenda? Looks like you did. We always have time during our meetings for public comment. One will be in just a few moments, and then also prior to adjournment that we'll reopen it for public comment. If you do have a question or a concern, you're welcome to speak both times. You're welcome to speak one of the two times, or if you're just here to listen, that's equally fine. We do ask that your comments be related to county government matters, and then if you try to limit your time to about five minutes out of respect for people's schedules, we appreciate that as well. Item two on the agenda would be row officer reports and comments, and we're very honored today to have Sheriff Perry Colero with us. Sheriff, anytime a row officer is here, we give them that opportunity if they wish to say anything.
I have nothing to say but Merry Christmas to everybody. Have a nice holiday coming up.
Thank you, sir. We wish you the same, you and your family. Thank you, Sheriff. I will now turn to public comment. Also, if you do have something to say, would you please state your name for the record as well? If you have something to say, we can call on you. Yes, Dan?
I'm Barbara Grossman. This is Amy Hawkins. She's my supervisor, and we're from Disability Options Network, the SEAL Center for Independent Living, and we just wanted to come and introduce ourselves and let you know we're here for any networking if you ever need to call on us for anything that needs in the community.
Well, we're very appreciative. We do work closely with some of the other folks in your organization, and I think a number of our departments particularly work closely with you folks. In fact, our planning director, Mrs. McKinney, has had a good deal of interaction with your agency, so it's very kind of you to join us today. You're certainly welcome to stay the entire meeting. If you do have to leave early, we understand. I can tell you, these aren't the most exciting meetings to sit through, but we'll...
It's okay. A lot of SEAL work is not necessarily exciting, but it's important.
Understood. Well, we appreciate, once again, your joining us, and if at the end of the meeting you'd like to add something else, we'll certainly call on you again.
Thank you.
Thank you both, ladies. Yes, sir, Mr. Burcheck?
Bob Burcheck. I noticed under New Business Number Seven, the awarding of money, $78,000 to some organizations. I'm not sure the details of this situation, but unlike anything that the government does, it's not their business, and I don't consider this to be your business, taking the taxpayers' money and giving it to some organization. I noticed there are thousands of property owners that are on the delinquent list, and the newspaper has a sheriff's sale with many homeowners' homes being taken for some reason or another, but I don't think the Commissioners should be spending taxpayers' money for such a grant to the favored organization. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burcheck. Other comments at this time? Okay, we thank you all, and once again, before we adjourn, we'll reopen it for other comments that you might have. Under Fiscal and Contractual, and I might add that the documents we're referring to are available if anybody wishes to see them, and Debbie, I'll give you my packet when we're done today. At most meetings, we do receive from the Controller's Office, and this week is no exception, we do receive what are known as warrant registers, or also called check reconciliation registers. It's a listing of the bills that have been paid through the Controller's Office. These are dated December 3, 5, and 6. And Mr. Kennedy and Mr. Sanada, I'll give you gentlemen time to look these documents over, and then, once you've done that, if one of you would care to make a motion to accept these documents, I'll gladly accept such a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Hi, Barbara, anytime you'd like to have that motion.
Thank you, both gentlemen. Do either of you have any questions on these documents from the Controller's Office?
No, I don't.
Thank you. None, Dan, or do you have one? No. That being said, we have a motion on the floor to accept the warrant registers. It's been appropriately seconded. May we please have a roll call?
Commissioner Sanada?
Chris, your name was called.
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Also in our packet would be the minutes of last week's Commissioners' meeting, which took place on December 3. Once again, gentlemen, take whatever time you need to look them over, and once you're ready, I could take a motion for us to adopt the minutes. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
I'll back the motion.
And thank you, Mr. Sanada. Gentlemen, do you have any questions or concerns about the minutes?
No.
Okay, thank you both. That being said, could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That takes us down to Commissioner Reports and Comments, and we rotate the order in which we speak, so I get to go first today. I do want to note that this coming Saturday, in the borough of Elwood City, the Elwood City Fire Department will be holding a memorial service for two firefighters who perished in the line of duty a number of years ago on Lawrence Avenue. And Debbie, I have the document upstairs, gives all the details about it, so if you're able to stick around, I can get that for you. I should have brought it with me, but I'll be glad to give it to you. That'll be this coming Saturday, and I believe Mr. Kennedy and I plan to attend. Mr. Sanada's out of town, but I'm sure if he were here, he would join us as well.
Absolutely.
The only other thing I'll note, and I don't think I've ever sat up here and talked about sports, but I'm going to deviate for just a second. I was real pleased, as a Wampum native especially, to see that Dick Allen was finally admitted to the Baseball Hall of Fame. It's long overdue. It's a shame it didn't happen while he was still living, but at least it's happening. So we're, the whole county, of course, is proud of Mr. Allen's achievements in the world of sports, along with that of his two brothers who played professional baseball. And they brought Wampum and Lawrence County a great deal of fame, so we're happy. Should have happened a long time ago, but at least it's happening. So maybe the last time you'll ever hear me talk about sports up here, but anyhow. Mr. Kennedy, you're next on the list.
The only thing I really have is we went to Wampum Christmas parade on Saturday. My first time down there. Nice event. A lot of nice people down there. As you know, that's your hometown. They showed it. They were excited you were there. And then we also did the West County Tourism Luncheon up here on the hill at the Stone Castle Abbey. Interesting place, as I think we all found out. Couple things we did last week. Good things off too.
Thank you, Dan. Commissioner Sanada?
Yeah, I'd like to echo your comments. Chairman, I think Alan, he's tomorrow here, and I remember back in the day, he was brutal on the Pirates. Whenever they played us, and like you say, it is long overdue. He has his statistics, and we're just very happy for him and his family because it's a honor that you would deserve. I'd also like to echo Chairman Commissioner Kennedy's comments. That was my first time participating at Wampum. Great, it really was a nice event. I never represented Wampum out of the legislature, so this was my first time to be there, and I've heard it was a great parade, and it actually was. I want to thank everyone that were very hostile to me, and I think Commissioner Kennedy. The actual song that grounds, Chairman. It really was a nice event. I look forward to participating again next year. And also the tourist promotion dinner or luncheon last week, I think, was a great success. All the good things, Janet and Jenny and the whole tourism team is doing for Lawrence County in promoting the county, I think, was on display last week. I also like to mention, I had the opportunity to represent all, you know, the three Commissioners at Pastor Ron Mount's 15th anniversary celebration downtown Newcastle, Surmax last Saturday evening. It was a very nice event. Pastor Mount and his wife Karen are two community leaders of inspiration. It really was a nice event with big pastors, and we were there to honor Pastor Mount, so I was happy to make the proclamation presentation for the county on Saturday night. So that's pretty much all I have.
Thank you, Chris, and we especially appreciate your representing us at the event for Pastor and Mrs. Mounts. Thank you for taking the time to do that on our behalf. And again, we also appreciate your joining us today for this meeting by phone. That being said, gentlemen, we'll move along to New Business and our first proposed resolution. What number will this one be, Vanessa?
369.
Number 369. This comes from the District Attorney's Office, and Chrissy Montague is with us, and Chrissy, if you could please come up, hopefully that microphone is, you can adjust it if you need to. We have in front of us a proposal that would allow the county, particularly the District Attorney's Office, to apply to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency to implement the SABAN program, which is known as the Statewide Automated Victim Information and Notification Program. And I'll let you give us all the details, but I believe we've been doing this on an ongoing basis.
Yes.
So would this be a renewal?
Yes.
For lack of a better term. I'll let you fill us in, please.
So PA SABAN is basically so that victims can be notified if an offender is put in jail, if they are, they would be notified if they had to go from one jail to another, if they escaped from the jail, or if they'd just been released on probation or parole.
And according to the proposed resolution, the entities that are involved in this are the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency, the Pennsylvania District Attorney's Institute, and the county, because they all work jointly. And this is a one-year period effective January 1 of 2025, ending at the end of calendar year 2025.
Correct.
Thank you. Let me see if my colleague, Mr. Kennedy, has any questions. Not at all. Okay, thank you, sir. Commissioner Sanada, any questions for Chrissy?
No.
Okay, thank you. Gentlemen, would one of you care to make a motion for this resolution?
I agree, accept the resolution.
I'll second.
Thank you both, and if there are no other, anything else you need to add? Okay, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Well, we appreciate your joining us. You're welcome to stay, but I bet you have pretty important things to do upstairs, so...
All right, thank you.
Thanks for your time. Take care. The next item on the agenda, which would be Proposed Resolution 370, is a proposal coming to us through the Planning Department, and Amy McKinney is with us, the Director of the Department, to discuss this proposal. This involves the facade business grant that was set up as a result of funding that was received from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development's Keystone Communities Program, and this is specifically earmarked for use in the borough of Elwood City. I believe we voted on some of these requests or some of these proposals in the past.
Oh, I know, yes.
And the format is such that businesses apply, the maximum they're permitted to receive is $5,000, subject to them matching up to $5,000. And the proposal has to be reviewed by a steering committee in the borough of Elwood City that then makes a recommendation back to the Planning Commission, and it's ultimately considered and voted on by this board. I hope I have that all.
Very good, Vanessa.
Well, but I'm going to see what else you have to add about this specific resolution, and then we can open it up for questions.
Yeah, the only thing I want to add to in regards to the process, we check everything. We make sure everything is in place. Business owners, if they don't own the property, they have to have approval from the person that they're running off of. They're also required to stay there for a certain number of years afterwards. We don't want businesses coming in, fixing it up, and then selling it and making a profit, you know, to benefit themselves. The main purpose of this is to benefit Elwood City, the area that the Elwood City Borough Council determined that they wanted to use these funds for. Maximum, like you said, they can only receive $5,000, and we have about $39,000 left, I think, in the, don't quote me on that number, but we still have some money to spend. The contract ends at the end of June of 2025. We do intend to ask for a one-year extension to hopefully spend that money. The application that we just received is from Bernstein Capital LLC. The project is located on, let me find a second here, 215 Fifth Street, Elwood City. They're asking for the $5,000, which they are matching with $5,000, and actually a little bit more than that, they'll be putting in the quotes that they submitted to us, and that's towards painting the front of the building, removing metal and replacing its glass. Facade is only for the area that faces the street. You have to be able to see it from the street, so. This application was received, met all the requirements, and was sent to the Elwood City Committee for their review and approval, and once we got that, then it's presented to you guys for your action.
Thank you for that information. And let me ask this question. Do they get the grant at the conclusion of the work?
Yes, this is 100% reimbursable grant. They have to submit to us all the documentation, invoices, prove that they paid, that checks, you know, cleared, and then they also have to submit to us after pictures, making sure the work was done. I also go down there and check everything as well, but, and then they have to sign off on a certification of completion, verify and notarizing that they did the work as well. So there's a process too before they get the money.
And then my final question is, bear with me a minute. I think my final question may have just popped out of my head. Why don't I, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Kennedy, and maybe I'll remember what I was going to ask you. Mr. Kennedy?
One thing I did on Saturday after the Wampum parade, I looked down there to see what this building looked like, and it's actually the main drag coming into Elwood really, and it's right there where they just got done putting sheets in, putting the dented donuts in. They cleaned up, and there was a guy on a ladder two doors down from this, working on a building. It definitely needs done and helping people clean out Elwood, so. Looking at it, you can see what needs done, it's been cleaned up, and that whole area could be cleaned up. If we get out and maybe push some more people into it.
Yeah, it has been, so one of the things that, like I said earlier, the contract ends, and we're going to ask for an extension, but one of the things we talked about when I was down with the members of the committee was, yeah, getting the push out there. Mary in my office created a flyer for the council members, and Linda List at the Elwood City Borough and Kevin Swager are sending it out. Ryan McCandless, who put the chamber, they're going to send it out, they're going to put it out in their electric bill that they send to the business owners that qualify for the program. But, you know, the one issue, there's two issues, is obviously they have to do the dollar-for-dollar match, so not everybody is able to do that. And there's, some people have not been in favor of the fact that they have to agree to stay there for 70 years afterwards or pay the money back, because we have had, it's been three projects, once we awarded it, they actually said, you know what, we're not going to do it, after they saw that they had to stay there for three years. We had one that entered into the agreement with us, told me that she was doing the work, and they finished it, but then they decided to sell the building, so they aren't even coming after the grant fund, so. You know, it is like, yeah, it's $5,000, but there's things that they have to do as well, and it's not as easy for everybody to do that either, so. But we are trying to get the word out as much as we can, but it's up to them to come to us for it, too, so.
We'll figure it out and see how much Elwood is done, the whole place looks great.
Yeah.
Through physical accounts, so, you know, I think we should read that.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy, and I did remember what I, yes. Can you confirm that the borough designated a portion of Lawrence Avenue and a portion of Fifth Street as the areas or origins? Go me on that.
It's a little bit, Lawrence, I have the map of Ford's, I mean, it's all like the off, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yes, it's a nice size area.
Okay.
You look at the list, it's drawn this page up there on Ford. There's Perry now, because they dragged me down there one time, but...
Yeah, so some of the work, like Attorney Fox put in windows, Posey's...
Yeah, he's on Sixth Street.
Yeah, Posey's by Patty. Women Funeral Home, do fix up Turner's home.
Oh, yeah, they're also on Sixth Street.
Yeah, he fixed up the pillars, and so that looked really nice. The Nezis did some work, kind of thing. I have the list, but, yeah, so it's kind of sporadic, but, you know, it's coming, you know, somewhere eventually.
Thank you.
Elwood City Revitalization Group, they fixed up their building, they did some like cleaning of the masonry to make it look nice from the street, too, so.
Okay, thank you for that information. Commissioner Sanada, do you have questions for Amy?
Yeah, I can be pretty stating that you consent with the buildings that were taken care of. Now, when was the last time someone applied to this grant?
When was the last time somebody applied?
The last application, the last application you guys acted on was August.
Of this year?
Yeah.
August of this year?
This is the first one we received since August.
So it's been like a four month lag time. And you say they are getting the word out?
Yes.
Now, I mean, things have been going on for a while, so I mean, it's important, they're all the businesses, like Elwood City has a nice, fun street, and I'm not, I mean, applied yet for something that's the grant per se, if it's being used properly, but they need to get word out to every business on that stretch.
Yeah, they, when we first started the process, they, you know, they got the word out, they had the application on their website, they, Brad Ovial, I know, went door to door. Brad and Ryan, the members of the committee have been doing their best to get the word out, and actually, they've actually helped follow up with some of our applicants who then returned their agreements, or worked with ones that were like having issues with getting all their documentation. They've been really helpful in helping them and helping them be successful. And like I said, we just sent a flyer two weeks ago, they were sending the flyers out, they're posting it all around the borough. We're going to post it on our Facebook page, and the Chamber of Commerce is going to do the same on their Elwood.
Okay, well, that is a very favorable, because I want to hear everybody's no opportunity. I will be voting no on this resolution, because I did make a commitment when I ran this job that I want to vote for any grants or contracts for elected officials. I just wanted to make that point, very clear, I don't want to vote for any grants for elected officials, no matter who they are. All right, that's all that I have to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Sanada. Dan, anything else on your end?
None.
Thank you. And Amy, anything else you wish to bring our attention? Okay, well, we have a proposal in front of us, Resolution 370, that would enter into an agreement with Bernstein Capital LLC, for them to move forward with the $5,000 grant that they will match for work to be performed at 215 Fifth Street in the borough of Elwood City, specifically painting the front of the building, removing metal and replacing glass. This is Proposed Resolution 370. May I have a motion?
Oh, my God, motion.
Is there a second? Based on Mr. Sanada's comments, I'll offer the second, and are there any other discussion before we take a roll call? If not, we'll take a vote, please.
Commissioner Sanada?
No.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Amy, thank you so much. Is that all you have for us?
That's all I have for you. Bye, see you next week, Doug.
That's fine.
Thank you.
You're always welcome here, Amy. Thank you so much. Number, the next item on the agenda, which would be Proposed Resolution 370, we're going to get to you, Chad, let's see here.
371.
Yeah, there you are. Chad, I'm sorry. I was jumping ahead. My fault, not yours. You were right to stand up. 371 is a proposal from the Department of Public Safety. Please forgive me.
Oh, no worries.
This is Proposed Resolution 371. Chad Strobel is our Public Safety Director, and Chad, we appreciate your joining us today. This involves the 911 statewide interconnectivity funding grant agreement, and it's pretty detailed, so I'm going to let you fill us in on all the specifics, if you could, please.
This will be entering into agreement for a few projects for part of the power one interconnectivity grant. The first project would be Butler, Lawrence County Shared Recorder Project. Like most of our projects, we entered into agreements with other counties as a cost-saving measure. Items, especially this recorder, was built for multiple phone lines, multiple radio lines, and multiple screens to be recorded, and for us to purchase one on our own, for how small of an operation we are, would probably be very cost efficient. So we entered into agreement with Butler County, and we're discussing expanding that into a couple other counties as part of our ARCAD group, if the state funding will allow it, to make better use of such a robust piece of equipment. So this will be to accept $11,855 from the 911 surcharge funding to maintain our recorder. This keeps us in compliance with our records retention, that we hold all phone calls, all cat incidents, all screen recordings for 45 days, in case they would be used for any, and all quality assurance, criminal cases or similar cases. The second one is for ICorz master site maintenance agreement. Again, cost savings, the radio systems are very, very robust, and for us to purchase a four radio system just on our own, in service, our smaller county, and kind of on an island by ourselves as far as communications, wouldn't be very efficient. So we're working with multiple counties around Region 13, and we've got, I think, a lot of the cloth towns now are all on board with this ICorz radio system, where we share equipment, we share capabilities to get the most bang for, you know, keeping these systems up and running, and it also helps with interoperability, if we go to other counties, like, you got my radio, you know, Indiana County, Marshall County, Butler County, Green County, all these counties, I can work seamlessly with them through this agreement. So this will maintain our portion of the system. The next one, $25,000 for the Lawrence Next Generation 911 GIS Post-Migration Project. Um the next one, twenty-five thousand dollars for the Lawrence Next Generation nine one one GIS Post Migration Project. Twenty-five thousand dollars to go to maintaining our GIS information. Uh we're required to update our GIS information monthly. We work with uh Mr. Miller at Planning uh keeping all that information correct, updating addresses, making sure street names are correct, ratings are correct. And we upload that to the state monthly to do the, uh switch over to the Next Generation nine one one system where everything comes over internet lines and each state maintains the GIS information, so it uh funnels the call properly. When somebody makes a nine one one call, if it goes to a boy or something, Butler or where, I'll help you. That call gets your computer, it's transferred to the correct nine one one center, wherever that may be. They have to have up to date GIS information, make sure every call is going to the proper place every time it comes in, whether it be cell phone, landline, or the few landlines that's still left, boy, however it works. This will uh assist with us maintaining that GIS information and keeping that all up to date. Uh the last one is for the West Core ESINet maintenance. The ESINet is our emergency services network. It's a I guess proprietary network to Region thirteen, um us and our surrounding counties, the fourteen counties, City of Pittsburgh. Um kind of initiated this project many years ago before it was required, but we have our own network that uh runs, we're done to include all of our counties. So we have a jump to Mercer County, although we haven't jumped to Butler County, then they jump to other counties, and that one jumps to other counties. So if there's ever a failure in the system, it can revert back and still, you know, maintain all of those counties with that work. And when we run the Next Generation nine one one, we already had the uh infrastructure in place that we can just hop right on board those and build anything. A lot of our uh eastern states are building these ESINets, uh family engine, nine one one, ours was already in place. This runs our radio, this runs our, we've got the CAD system, everything. So this eight thousand five hundred eighty-nine dollars sixty cents will go towards uh maintaining that system, our portion of that system. But every county um in these projects gets a similar amount of money depending on their size that put in our portion to maintain these systems. This agreement, well, I just, you know, agree with the state or confirm with the state that we will spend this money on the projects outlined, we have to follow the regulations, uh report the, you know, spendings. And we upload those into a portal online saying, here's the receipt, here's the invoice, here's the receipt we paid for this project. We upload it, they burn it, and say, okay, these are going everything correctly. But this agreement will be for um, yeah, this year, January first twenty-five, December thirty-first twenty-five, to receive and properly utilize those funds. And again, this all comes from the nine one one surcharge fund, see, uh dollar ninety-five for every line, uh line.
Well, as always, you have uh presented to us uh very succinct and understandable proposal. There's a lot to digest, but we've obviously got a real handle on it, which we appreciate. Uh I'll see if Commissioner Sanada has questions for you, Chad.
Uh Chad was very thorough, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Commissioner Kennedy, any questions for Chad? Well, once again, we we greatly appreciate your staying on top of matters like this to make certain that uh when these funding opportunities arise, we're we're at the table. And uh ultimately, it it everything you've talked about today could eventually impact any resident of this county who might have a situation that would necessitate their calling nine one one. And as I interpret this, so many of these ensure that the system will work appropriately and accordingly. So uh and again, a lot of, a lot of it just circles back to you and your staff and your collective professionalism, so. If there are no other questions, could could I have a motion for Resolution 371?
I'll make that motion.
I'll stand.
Thank you, Chris, thank you, Dan. And if there are no other comments, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Fugler?
Yes.
Most carries.
Thank you. Uh always a pleasure, Chad. I'm sure you probably need to head back to the building.
Yeah, we have uh guys mechanic for our building doing some work right now, so you'll heat back up with Jared and
The heat's on, I hope it's on. Okay.
Yes, it's water, it's.
Oh, alright, always always something, isn't it?
Thank you for the support.
I went to him over the weekend.
Thanks, Chad. Very same to you. Take care, Chad. Thank you. The uh next proposed resolution, which would be number three seventy-two is coming to us from the Mental Health Developmental Services Office, but Mr. Baldwin, I don't believe, was able to make it today, so pinch hitting for this, my sports analogy, pinch hitting for Scott. You should. The county administrator, oh, you should be a charter member of that. Uh you have a proposal to us relative to the Southwest Behavioral Health Management, but could you give us all the details?
Absolutely. Um this is a renewal for twenty twenty-five, uh for calendar year twenty twenty-five with Southwest Behavioral Health uh through the Mental Health Department uh uh office here and uh Southwest Behavioral Health. Southwest was uh founded in nineteen ninety-eight to administer what's called the Health Choices Program, which is a supplemental insurance program for uh individuals with uh mental health issues, um intellectual disabilities and things of that nature. Uh at that time, uh it was what was called the Southwest Six Counties, Lawrence County was part of, and and that included Armstrong, Butler, uh Indiana County, West Worland County, Washington County, and and Marge as well. Uh those were the six counties uh that came together. Each of those counties is still involved after all these years, uh still called the Southwest Six. Uh we have board representation uh in the form of Scott Baldwin and Becky Abrams, and our drug and alcohol sit on the board there. Um what Southwest does, they they uh coordinate the programming and financial operations between the counties and what's what's now called Caroline Health. Caroline Health is Commissioner, you may remember Value Behavioral Health. They're the new name for Value Behavioral Health.
Thank you.
Um they also serve as a liaison between Lawrence County and Caroline and uh in addition, the benefits of it is it's it's a full process with some bigger pro- uh bigger counties, so when when the region sees the savings, Lawrence County certainly gets its share. Um Southwest provides opportunities for counties to bring new programming into the county and uh also different financial opportunities in the form of reinvestment dollars, which have been very helpful uh to the mental health system and the drug and alcohol system.
So both you and Mr. Baldwin are, I assume, recommending that we move forward with this proposal?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that, Joe. Uh I'll ask Mr. Kennedy if he has any questions.
No.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh Mr. Sanada, any questions for Joe?
No.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. That all being said, would one of you care to make a motion for Resolution 372?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you both. And if there are no other questions, I'll ask Vanessa to call the roll, please.
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Fugler?
Yes.
Person carries.
Thank you. Again, thank you, Joe. Well, while you're still up at bat.
Sure.
Uh one of the requirements, one of the very important requirements of role that the county plays is each year we have to propose our annual budget for the upcoming calendar year. Uh the county runs on a January one through December thirty-one uh fiscal year. The uh county code requires that we uh introduce a proposed budget and that that proposed budget be on public display for twenty days. And then at the conclusion of the twenty days, uh we're required then to vote on that proposed budget. We have to have it in place on or before December thirty-one of the calendar year in order for it to take effect on January one of the of the new calendar year. Uh so accordingly, uh we intend today through uh Resolution three seventy-three to propose the budget. And then our expectation is that uh uh three weeks from today which would be uh December thirty-one, Tuesday, December thirty-one, at our regular meeting, which will take place at ten o'clock in this room, that's the day we anticipate giving final approval to the budget. We are permitted to make minor adjustments to the budget during that twenty day period. Uh the law gives us the uh guidelines for how much or how little we're able to make any adjustments to uh the proposed budget. Now, I want to point out that uh Mr. Vanasco has devoted a great deal of time over the last two or three months in preparing this document. Uh he has uh uh met with uh uh elected officials, the courts, and department heads to go over each of their respective budgets. Uh he's had assistance from Controller Prestipine and Controller Prestipine's staff and Albert Antonelli, uh who uh works at Mental Health Developmental Services, who has I think a pretty good handle on budgets in general.
Budgets and uh
Spreadsheets. So Albert has spent a lot of time in your office uh putting this document together. So I'm sure I speak for Dan and Chris in offering our thanks to you and the people that we've mentioned that that worked on this. Uh we did have some input along the way, but but the the grunt work, for lack of a better term, was done by this gentleman. The good news is the budget is balanced. Now, that's easy, easy to say, but the law requires that it has to be balanced. And the law requires that we have to have it in place by the end of the calendar year. We we cannot go over that deadline like some other legislative bodies sometimes do, whether it be at the state or federal level. Uh the other piece of good news is this is a balanced budget and it does not necessitate any change in the real estate property tax for next year. Uh we've said it many times, counties are only able to levy a property tax. We are not permitted to tax wages or income. Cities, boroughs, townships, school districts, they have the ability to do both. They can tax property and they can tax wages and income. And most of them do. Uh I think the one exception in Lawrence County is New Wilmington Borough. The Borough doesn't levy a real estate tax, to my knowledge. But um but we're limited or restricted to the property tax only. So it's a credit to Mr. Vanasco, it's a credit to the elected row officers, including Sheriff Palera. It's a credit to the department heads and the courts. But they've pulled this all together in such a manner that once again, it's balanced and it does not necessitate any change in the uh property tax, and we'll be discussing that a little further. Uh Joe, I probably stepped on your toes a little bit, forgive me for doing that, but I'd like for you to give us some more detail if you would, and then we'll see if Mr. uh Kennedy and Sanada have questions.
Absolutely, and you know, the the biggest point to highlight, I believe, you know, is is a balanced budget with no proposed uh tax increase, property tax increase for the county. Um our real estate uh taxes went up slightly this year, which has been a rarity. Typically, we've seen them going down and and.
Can I stop a minute? Just to clarify, you said our real estate taxes, the assessed values, that's what went up?
The assessed value. Oh yeah, just just slightly, but uh that always helps. A few of the highlights along with that, um first and foremost, our department heads and elected officials were fabulous throughout the process. Um I believe of the thirty-three departments which are noted in the in the uh budget pages, uh fifteen of them actually presented their original budget at a decrease from where they were at a year ago. Um and there's a lot of fiscal responsibility going on, obviously, in their departments, and when you start out with with those type of numbers, then, you know, you have a chance to be in pretty good shape. Um you know, probably the biggest cost factor, two cost factors that came into play was, you know, we had recent union negotiations, which we saw an increase of um probably about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars just through the union uh negotiations and and uh changes in pay scales. Uh so we had to obviously uh tighten the belt in those and and decide, you know, uh make sure that those numbers are under control, but um we also had an unheard of uh decrease in our healthcare of one percent. Which typically, in today's day and age, we see healthcare rates going up and up every year. Uh the county's not immune to that, but fortunately, uh throughout different programs and and different things have happened, we saw a one percent decrease, which is a really positive. And and another thing is, is and I give a lot of credit to HR and their safety committees and the different things they're doing. Uh we did see a twenty-seven percent decrease in our workmen's comp, workers' comp insurance. So those went from two fifty-five to one eighty-five, which was also a big help, and we got those, I got those numbers just over the weekend or towards the end of last week, and I couldn't uh more thrilled uh about it as we were finishing up the the final, I don't want to say final copy, but the copy of our budget to present. And uh as always, thank you, like I said, to the department heads, their fiscal teams, uh Controller Prestipine and his staff, Albert Antonelli. Uh this was a process for uh Controller Prestipine, Mr. Antonelli and myself started, and the department head, it was started September first. And uh everybody worked diligently and were cooperative with with the three of us in being able to get this done, so. Uh I thank, thank the commissioners, obviously, because um I dedicate a lot of time to that. Sometimes, you know, there's other duties out there as well and and uh we're going over financials several hours a week, and they afford me that time to skip a meeting here or there or or uh, you know, prioritize different meetings, so I appreciate that as well.
Again, Joe, we offer our thanks to you. I I neglected to point out that uh uh if we vote today uh to uh give this uh resolution its approval, which which is the introduction of the budget, uh a copy of the budget will be available on the counter in the commissioner's office. It's open for public inspection. I believe we'll be posting it on the website. I think in the past, we've done that. Do you know if uh?
We we have, we'll make the arrangements today, I mean, perhaps we'll put the copy on.
Okay, the copy. Thank you. If that's if that's doable, we we would appreciate that being done. And uh our, again, our expectation is three weeks from today, uh taking a final vote. Uh let me see if Commissioner Sanada has any questions for Joe.
Uh I probably don't have a lot of questions. Uh if you watch the patient, this is my first. I did uh participate in this, uh the procedure. I do want to thank Joe and uh Albert and the controller and everyone, Chairman, as you were saying earlier, uh this process, it started, you know, many months ago, and Joe was very straightforward with us as commissioners, bringing us on on the negotiations recording and uh and I use the word fiscal responsibility, and I I give you credit, Joe, I mean, we had this discussion earlier on here. Our goal was to, you know, fund the services the best we can and not raise taxes, and uh I thank you and your team for for accomplishing this goal and as you both do, I think uh it was well done and uh I'm just pleased that, you know, we we as a, as a unit, all three of us as commissioners, I think we work very closely with you, Joe, just to give you the encouragement to put these numbers together because you were here many times in Admiral, just crunching those numbers, you and Albert especially, and I thank both of you because it's not an easy task, that you have to put these numbers together and uh the numbers uh are gonna work, and uh we want to continue on this path of fiscal responsibility that we started this year. It's a, it's a mission team and uh with you and your group, and uh we want to see this continued. That's why I thank everybody, and also I do want to also thank the row offices for their fiscal restraint, and that was sometimes difficult, but everybody was on the same page, I think we all have the same goal, so that's really all I have to say.
Thanks, Chris. Commissioner Kennedy?
Just to get you the same thing, Joe and Albert, they uh I sat in there a few times, listened to them and how they were doing things and getting this thing done and and all of us watching where it all goes, I think it's the important thing to keep this thing down. You know, I, Joe knows my goal was to keep these tax- You know, Joe knows my goal was to keep these taxes in line and not do anything with them in the next few years. This year will be the same as we did, as coming here, as we did this past year, just watch where we go and make sure we're being... Thank you, and Albert, probably cost me a lunch here and there with Albert, but that's okay. I don't know, give him a hard time. Great guy. He really, and I had to steal him a few times to come back and look at a few of my spreadsheets, and he's a great guy that knows spreadsheets. I think the world of him. Smart kid, so we appreciate you guys.
Thank you, Dan. Gentlemen, this is Proposed Resolution 373, which would enable us to propose next year's budget, and as noted, it will stay on, it's introduced today for a three-week period with the expectation of a final adoption on December 31. Would one of you care to make a motion, please?
I'll make the motion. I'll put the project forward.
And I'll second.
Gentlemen, thank you both. Any final questions? Joe, anything before we take the...
No, just thank you.
Very welcome. Take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Ladies, we appreciate your joining us today.
Thank you for having me.
Please come back.
We will.
Thank you. Now, in line with what we just discussed, we are also required to take action on the rate of taxation as it relates to the real estate, county real estate tax, and it's broken out as follows. This would be Resolution 374. The total millage for next year, which will equal what the millage was this year, is 8.309 mils, and it's split three ways. The bulk of it, which would be for the general fund or for general expenditures here at the courthouse, would be 7.528 mils. For debt purposes, because we have floated bonds in the past, probably the most recent one, I think, was for the public safety building and the communication enhancements that went along with it from about eight or nine years ago. Has we done something?
I'm not sure if we did whatever it counts.
I'm not, I can't recall if it was, it was a small...
Yeah, it was a small...
Yeah. The public safety building, that was a very significant one, yes. The debt is essentially comparable to a mortgage, if you will, in many respects. The portion dedicated for debt purposes is .646 mils. And then finally, the state law does give counties the ability to levy a portion of the real estate tax and earmark it for public libraries. And this was first initiated back in the 1990s, when, actually, it was Commissioner Burick, I think, brought this forward, it was before we were here. So through the years, included in the real estate tax is .135 mils, which is a dedicated portion that goes to the three libraries in Lawrence County, the Newcastle area Public Library, the Elwood City area Public Library, and the Public Library out in North Beaver Township. Those three libraries get funding as a result of this portion of the real estate tax. So once again, when you add those three up, it comes to 8.309 mils, and again, that is no change from the current assessment. Dan, do you have questions on this proposal? Chris? Oh, I'm sorry, nothing, Dan? Okay, Chris?
No.
Joe, did I miss anything on this?
No.
Okay, thank you. So this is Resolution 374. May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, gentlemen. If there are no other questions, we'll ask Vanessa to call the roll, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much. The next resolution is 375, and Joe, we really got you earning your money today because you're going to talk about this one. A number of, maybe a year, two years ago, various states through their respective attorneys general challenged many pharmaceutical companies relative to opioids and tied in with the addiction and the fatal overdoses that went along with that. So as a result, courts have ruled that these companies had to face fines, that were then allocated to each state, and then each state in turn has distributed these fine dollars to counties to spend. So here in Lawrence County, we created an opioid advisory board that consists of Mr. Vanasco, who chairs that board, Judge Motto sits on the board, Rebecca Abramson from Drug and Alcohol, Scott Baldwin from MHDS, Loretta Spillvoel from the JL. Have I missed anyone?
John Bal. [spelled phonetically].
Oh, John Bal, CYS.
And Josh.
Oh, and District Attorney Alan Kusa, my apologies to both of them. This advisory board receives requests from entities here in Lawrence County to utilize these dollars. The advisory board reviews the requests, but we are subject to guidelines that, quite frankly, are quite narrow.
Yes.
And we have to follow from the state in utilizing these funds. But evidently, you have one proposal here from Vision Ministries. They've asked for $78,750.50 from this grant fund, but once again, it's not tax dollars, it's money that came from the pharmaceutical companies as a result of their being fined in court. So can you tell us what Vision Ministries is going to do with these dollars, Joe?
Yeah, this is actually a renewal on a project that was approved in 2023 by the commissioners as well as the opioid board. Vision Ministries provides in-school seminars to all our local school districts. They go in, they talk to the kids about their potential pitfalls and so forth when dealing with opioids and other drugs and alcohol, you know, to that matter. So this resolution, moving forward, would be approving them to continue their activities. Now, prior to the opioid dollars, these gentlemen at Vision Ministries went out, and they were doing this free of charge. Now, what we see is we're able to contribute, the opioid board approved this, and feels that we're able to buy them or get them funding for their promotional activities to give to the school districts throughout Lawrence County, and that's basically what they do. They set up seminars several times a year. Sometimes it's against the classrooms, other times it's to the whole school once in a while. To tell a little bit of their background, their personal history with possibly losing somebody with drug abuse or drug overdoses, and, you know, it's not a scare-strike program, but it's, they're pretty blunt.
To your knowledge, if you don't know the answer to this, it's certainly understandable. But to the best of your knowledge, do they deal with all eight school districts and the VOTAC, to your knowledge?
I'd have to go back and look. I believe they do.
Okay.
I believe that they do.
I would hope the answer would be yes, but thank you. Commissioner Kennedy, do you have questions for Joe?
Nothing. I know both gentlemen did a good job of trying to make a difference.
Thanks, Dan. Chris, any comments or questions?
Yeah, I don't believe there's one, you know, thing, you know, for many years, and if you do a good job of the community, spreading the word, and the school expansion was last year, before that, there were pretty many programs on throughout, which is trying to get the word out to youth and people, you know, about the thing, especially fentanyl, which is fatal. So, I mean, we want to do our share, and getting the education, it's very important to educate students, especially the younger grade, so I think it's a big investment.
Thanks, Chris. Well, you've heard Mr. Vanasco's recommendation as it comes from that advisory board. This is Resolution 375. Would one of you care to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second.
Thank you, gentlemen. If there are no other concerns, we could have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thanks, Joe. The next resolution, which would be 376, there are times when the county has property or holdings that are no longer able to be used effectively, and in order for us to dispose of this particular, these types of properties or holdings that we have, we have to post for sale and accept bids. And we're noting through this resolution that the county has a 2015 Ford Explorer SW. The color of the vehicle is white. The mileage right now stands at $113,264. The condition is considered to be fair, and since the vehicle, it's been determined that the worth of the vehicle is less than $2,500, we need to take action to allow for this vehicle to be posted for bids. Did I cover that correctly?
You did.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sanada, do you have questions on this resolution?
No.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kennedy?
No.
Okay, thank you. And Joe, your record...
I'm sorry.
No, please.
The only thing I would have is at the top of the resolution, it says 2042. It should be 2024.
Oh, yeah, boy.
2024. It's on this one, and then that's one.
Okay.
We can make other adjustments.
Certainly. It was a misprint. We got the year wrong, but we just made a correction to it. Should be 2024. Thank you, Joe. May I have a motion for this resolution?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Thank you both, gentlemen. If there are no other questions, we'll ask Vanessa to call the roll.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And similar to the previous resolution, this one being number 377, we have another vehicle. It's also a 2015 Ford Explorer. It's also white. This one also, this one has more mileage on it, it has 135,999 miles. It's considered to be in fair condition, and it's considered to be worth less than $2,500. This resolution would allow for us to post the sale of this vehicle to allow for bids to be submitted. Dan, any questions?
Perry Sheriff drove her out of block one more time.
One more. Chris, any questions?
I have no questions.
Thank you. May I have a motion for Resolution 377?
I will be there for you.
I'll second.
Thank you both, gentlemen. Vanessa, could you call the roll?
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And Resolution 378, this is a budget amendment, and you've probably, if you've come to our meetings, I'm... Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Boy, Sheriff, I'd have known we could have done this sooner. I'm sorry we kept you waiting.
All right.
I apologize.
It's enjoyable to hear.
Okay, it's good to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. During the course of the year, sometimes we receive unanticipated revenue that we didn't budget for, and we have to note that revenue and also note where it will be earmarked for the ultimate expense. This resolution, number 378, notes that we received, this I'm assuming would be the Public Safety Department, they received $13,250 in EMA pre-disaster mitigation general revenue, and they're asking that we earmark this $13,250 towards the expense line item for the EMA pre-disaster mitigation program. This was grant money that the county received from the Commonwealth. Commissioner Kennedy, do you have any questions?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Sanada, any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. Would one of you care to make a motion for this resolution?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
I thank you both, and we'll have Vanessa call the roll, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now, we've got to walk through our administrative transfers, and as we noted last week, we had a good number of them last week, we do this week as well, but it's typical at this time of year, or the end of the current budget, that we do have to make certain transfers. So I'm going to walk us through these. Chris and Dan, stop me if you have any questions, and when we get to the end, we can either take one vote for all of them, or if you wish to split them out in any fashion, we can do that as well. So here we go. The sheriff's office is asking for a total transfer of $10,000. All of this is coming from within his budget. He's asking for $1,000 from travel and training to go into his uniform line item. He's also asking for $1,000 coming from his salary of staff into uniforms, and then he's asking for $8,000 to be taken from the vehicle expense line item into his overtime line item. The adult probation office is asking from their contingency a total of $6,000. $4,000 of that is earmarked for materials and supplies, and $2,000 is for the staples line item. The courts would like for us to consider a $4,500 transfer from their law clerk line item into their master fees line item. Under commissioners, we're looking at a transfer of $27 from Commissioners General Administration into the subscriptions and books line item. Also from the commissioners, we have the following: from Staples, $350 into telephone/internet line item, also from Staples, $320 into the cable line item, and finally, from contracted services, $247.23 into equipment lease and rental. The voter registration office or voter services office would like to ask for a $675 transfer from contracted services into their equipment lease and rental line item. The county coroner is asking for $600 to come from his lease line item into that of gasoline. The pro bono jury is requesting a $600 transfer from her travel and training line item into her postage line item. Public Safety Department is requesting the following: $17,600 from the radio system maintenance line item into radio tower maintenance line item, from their contingency, $1,311.41 into pre-disaster mitigation, and finally, from their travel and training, $1,122.59, also into pre-disaster mitigation. Total amount of that transfer is $20,034. CYS is asking for a transfer of $550.78 from their contracted provider care line item into hauling refuse. The information technology department requests a $100 transfer from their contingency into their unemployment insurance line item. The public defender's office would like to take $370.83 from their contingency, place it in their equipment line item. Central court is asking for the following: $600 from their maintenance line item into their staples line item, $500 from their telephone into their staples, $100 from their contingency into their equipment lease line item, and $200 from their travel line item into equipment and lease. The pro bono jury's office is requesting a $1,000 transfer from her contingency line item into postage. Also from the pro bono jury, they'd like to take $7,400 from their contingency into office supplies. The courts, all of this coming from their contingency, $300 into the constable line item, and $1,000 into their interpreter line item totaling $1,300. Gentlemen, you've heard these requests. Dan, do you have any questions or concerns? Thank you. And Mr. Sanada, any concerns on your part? And Mr. Sanada, any concerns on your part?
No, we're straightforward.
Okay, thank you. Would one of you then be so willing to make a motion for us to approve these requests?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you both. Joe, everything kosher with you? Okay, thank you. We'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Vanessa.
You're welcome.
We have some announcements. This board will meet one week from today for our regular weekly public meeting, Tuesday, December 17 at 10:00. I'll note that the prison board meeting that was scheduled for December 18 has been canceled. The salary board will have a meeting on Friday, December 20, open to the public at 9:00 a.m. in this room. We are going to be closed. The county government center will be closed on Tuesday, December 24, Wednesday, December 25, and Thursday, December 26, in observance of the Christmas holiday. The courthouse will also be closed on New Year's Day, Wednesday, January 1 of 2025. The law requires that counties have an annual salary board meeting, and we will adhere to the law and have that meeting on Monday, January 6 of 2025 at 10:00 a.m. in this room. And then we will hold our first public meeting of 2025 on Tuesday, January 7 at 10:00 a.m. in this room. Public comment, they've all left for various reasons, so we, right now, have nobody in the audience, although Debbie left her things here, so I'm assuming maybe she's coming back. Closing comments from my fellow commissioners. Commissioner Sanada?
I'll begin the line forward to what is planned.
Thank you, sir, very much. Again, appreciate your taking the time to participate today. Commissioner Kennedy, closing comments?
They got bored, Vanessa. They're going--
Thank you. Vanessa or Joe, any last-minute items that you think of?
No, sir.
Okay. Well, once again, appreciate everybody's time and help, and there being no other business to be brought before this board. Could I please have an adjournment motion?
I'll make--
I'll be adjourned.
Care to second?
I'll second.
Okay. Mr. Sanada moves, and Mr. Kennedy seconds for adjournment. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The meeting is adjourned. We thank you all. Joe, you'll help us now?
Yeah. I'm trying to talk. I'm not able to.